All right. We're gonna go ahead and get started, folks. If you guys are still coming in, let people get settled in. We want to welcome you to our planning commission tonight. It's always great to see our neighbors out here participating in a free society, so kudos to coming out. We do enjoy having people here. We're gonna start our evening tonight with a word of prayer from member Little, and if you would please rise and join me for the prayers of the evenings after that.
How dear and kind Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity we can meet, and we pray for thy guidance and direction, help us to do thy will, and that we can work through these problems and figure out the best way we can handle them. Thank thee for this community, thank thee for all the members that are here, and pray that we can work together and accomplish many good things, and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members of the planning commission, any questions on the agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. So move a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any conflicts of interest for any members of the planning commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Having seen none, we're gonna go on to a period of public comment. So whenever there's a bunch of people in the room, I try and explain what's going on. So for those that didn't know exactly what's going on, forgive me. But for those that don't, you might find it beneficial. So there's two items on the agenda that are legislative in nature, which means we're gonna have a public hearing specifically for those. Those are the last two items on the agenda. For everything else on the agenda, there's no public hearing. What that means is that the public doesn't have a time specifically allocated to comment for that. So what we do for those times where the public doesn't have a time to comment for non-publicary meetings or issues, we open it up for public comment. So now is your time to talk about anything, if you want to come up and comment, or have anything written to comment, for anything on the agenda that's item one, items one through five. Now would be your time to do it. We just ask that you come up. There's a microphone up here. Tell us what your name is, where you live, not your address, just kind of the area you live in, so we have some idea of demographics and where people are at. And then what we'll be doing as you guys talk, I see someone coming up. Are you coming up? What you guys are doing as you're coming up to talk, we will be writing and taking notes. And then what we'll do is, we want you to be heard. We don't want you to feel like we just listened to you, we don't care. We're gonna take down notes from everything you say, and then you'll hear those things come out in our discussion later. We'll try and get your questions answered in front of you, so you don't feel like you're not being heard, or you're just not being attended to. Make sense? Thumbs up? Five, please? Okay. One or two, that'll work. All right, so now we're in public hearing?
Public comment?
Couple comments, I mean. Thank you.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. These aren't items that are on your agenda specifically. I'm not getting your public notices from the state website. I wonder if you could check into that. I know to look for them on the county website, but I'm not, I used to get them in my mail, and I'm not getting them. And the second thing is, on the town center ordinance, that's been on the county commission's agenda for several meetings now in the application that was presented to you in December for Mountain Green. And some of the issues that have come up, it said that the development agreement will help control the development, but as I see it, the rezone comes first. And so I'm wondering if you could look at the ordinance and maybe have the development agreement come forward with the rezone application, like it does with the resort zone? Just something for you to add to the long list of things you've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Waterbury. I live close to the ranch near Port Stato. I have no problem with the military aspect of this. I work for the federal government, so... I saw on the items that they did, DOT of traffic, there are snow piles. There's no traffic. Their agendas for the summertime, there ain't no traffic out there now. And when you get the RV trucks, boat shows, bike rallies, car shows, all that, that's when your traffic is during the summer, when this agenda's gonna be going. I've had workers that worked for that ranch, duck hunting, shooting, about 40, 50 yards from my house, my front door. DWR was called in, police was called in, you know? The defenders are gonna be able to sell liquor. It'll be through their license, not the ranch's license. Who's gonna monitor that? You know? Is everybody gonna have to put a chid in for every alcohol drink they have? He's here for changing of the CUP. From what I gather, it wasn't followed the first time, the original CUP. What's gonna keep him from not following it now? There's loose dogs from that ranch running around. I've had one confront my wife, and that's 600, 700 yards away from that place. There's been one just this week, running up and down the street. During the summer, you got all farm equipment. You got combines, you got all the hay trucks, and they take up three quarters of the road as is. That's a problem. This is not a city, I mean, city life. This is a country. Everybody moved up here to get away from that mess, at least I did. I don't want loud music parties. I like the peaceful part. I lived in LA. I'm tired of that mess. I don't want it up here. We don't need it up here. You kind of got the, one of the newest persons in the area, changing all of our way of life. It's not me to tell them what they can do with their property, but they shouldn't be able to change the way I wanna live. You know, I like the peacefulness. I like people that wave all the time. I don't want the traffic. I don't want the drunk drivers, you know? And you get people that are camping, hunting, fishing. You don't know if they've been drinking or not. I've helped half a dozen people that have crashed not far from the front door of my house because they've been pounding beers or whatever, you know? Add that with the increase of traffic, you got a mess. You know, we got a volunteer, paramedics and all that. They're working too hard as it is, especially with the older crowd in the neighborhood, you know? I, for one, and a lot of people that live close by me don't want this. I don't mind the military helping them out. That, I mean, I work for the military, and I don't have an issue with that. That's all great. But, you know, this is for weddings, concerts, and whatever, you know? The weddings, they say eight to 10. But what about parties, concerts? Little groups having their little conventions, or whatever they call it there? You know, this could be three, four times a week. And that street, there's blind corners. You got the addition of all the recreational people. Plus, you got people that possibly be drinking, trying to get to the show, they're late. Half the people that are RVing are hauling butt to get home. It's just an accident waiting to happen.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Axel Zinelli. I live in Mountain Green, directly across from the airport. I have a couple of questions regarding the Wasatch Industries CUP. The agenda here really doesn't tell me anything about it. What exactly I've heard, they want a fuel station there, possibly an aircraft repair facility, also a deli. I have concerns about a fuel station. And in regard to that, is this gonna be a mobile truck? What's the capacity of the truck? Where are they gonna fuel these aircraft? Is it gonna be right there by that former federal firefighter station? Or are they gonna travel to the aircraft? What safety measures are they gonna have available so far as any fire protection? If it's gonna be an aircraft repair facility, are they gonna be doing engine testing and run-ups there, which will create a lot of noise for myself and my neighbors? Are they gonna be doing electronics repair, airframe repair? If they're gonna do, you talked about a deli, what's the capacity of that? What's the traffic flow gonna be? How many, what's the occupancy level gonna be? There's a lot of questions. I hope there's representative here tonight from Wasatch Industries that can answer some of these questions. We're left kind of out in the cold as to what's going on there. I had no problem with the federal firefighters there. I'm a retired fighter pilot myself. I was a helicopter crew chief. I had no problem with their aircraft. I was also a former planning commissioner in City 50,000 in Southern California. So I kind of know how the game goes. I'd really like to get some clarification on all these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle Lyman, Mountain Green. I also wanted to have some comments on item number three. I have some concerns I wanted to voice on the conditional use permit that's being put forward from Wasatch Industries. The notice that was sent out to the community has the wrong building that's highlighted on the map. It also says it's currently owned by the Forest Service. I believe the Forest Service is just leasing it from the county, and it's a county-owned building, not a Forest Service building. Those two things being confusing on the notice that was sent out, I feel like they need to be corrected and sent out again before any more discussion is done, because I think we would have more community members come to the meeting with having the correct information on there. As a neighbor in close proximity of the building being discussed, I have a few concerns. First, the amount of traffic, auto and air traffic. We built our home when the master plan for the airport included 12 less hangars than it currently has planned. In comparable-sized airports, the maximum amount of aircraft is 60. The Morgan Airport, when they redid the plan, reported that it had 90 aircraft. In talking to some of the pilots, I've heard that it's up to close to 136 aircraft. That's before the 12 new hangars were approved by the county. So we're getting more and more traffic for an airport that is very small. A lot of pilots that I know don't come in and out of our airport because it is so small, and it's dangerous with the close proximity of all the homes that are there. As the 12 new hangars are being completed, we are seeing a big increase on the amount of traffic and noise. Planes and helicopters are even flying in and out of the airport after dark, which I don't, I don't know the rules on that. The airport manager's here, he could probably touch base on that, but I don't, we have no lights there, and it's pretty dangerous. I believe we did have one aircraft go down in Morgan County, and I just think we're gonna have a lot more of that with the recommendation that's being put forward with this PD. Let me see my notes. I don't want to miss anything. Usually when an airport is being planned, there's an environmental impact study done. I cannot find one that was done on the initial master plan of the airport. If there was done, if there was one done, it's not accessible to the public. And when the master plan was updated just a few years ago to add all of the additional hangars, there was not one updated at that point. A few years ago, the airport board requirements for its members were four non-pilot community members and four pilots with one council member. Probably, I think it was 2011, that was changed instead of pilots and non-pilots. It was changed to users and non-users. So at this point, you can have all but two pilots on the board there. So I think it's been pretty heavy the last few, well, I know it has been pretty heavy the last few years on pilots, because I serve on the airport board. So there's not a lot of community representation on it at this point. And I think the last few years with all of the changes, they've really been pushed through without any consideration of the community around it. Also, the county council signed an agreement in April of 2005 with the developer and the adjacent homes that a beautification berm would be built before any development occurred within the airport. That was not completed, but was brought up to the attention of our current council in 2021. They agreed at the meeting, all five unanimously agreed, that they would follow through with that. That's been about a year ago, and nothing's been done on that. I'm asking the planning commission to please have an environmental impact study done on the current plan of the airport before approving the CUP, and not allow this building to be used as a fixed space operator because of the negative impact it will have. Additionally, not any further development to the airport until the 2005-2021 agreement with the council has been completed. I just think we're really pushing the size of the airport that we have. Realistically, my home and all of the homes that are there probably should have never been built, but they are, and now we have to deal with that. And I would hate to have, the more traffic we get there, the higher chances are we're going to have an accident, and with having it be just right by those houses, I just think having a fueling station, you're gonna bring more and more airplanes in than what we would ever have before, and I don't think that's what we want as a community. It is very beneficial for the pilots. It's very nice for them to have something right there, to have food there, to have their fuel there. But it's for a very small percentage of the pilots there compared to the community that it will negatively impact.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Mike Collins, Porterville, immediate neighbor to the ranch. I want to clear something up that was said at the last meeting in November, just for clarification. It was mentioned that there was an accident involving the bridge, where my son had driven off the bridge, and that was an unsafe bridge, which required, you know, John, when he came aboard, to put in a new bridge. That is not the case. Kai Jensen, any of the locals that were here at the time, knew that his buddies, you know, towed him backwards across the bridge in the middle of a snowstorm in his Corvette, and he went off the side of the road, into the river. So I wanted to clear that up. But as far as the, you know, the bridge goes, just a, you know, a question on that. I know that there, I read, you know, the application, you know, for the agenda for tonight. I know there's a lot of studies that were done. You know, I'm not here to debate that. I don't have the engineering background. So I trust you, Dot, and, you know, the county engineers, you know, for that. But I do want to make a comment. The original bridge that was put in, and it was mentioned at the last meeting in November, that John had bought the private road. I was misunderstood. I thought it was a shared driveway. It's a private road. He bought it, he owns it. The original bridge was connected to that private road. When the bridge was tore out and a new bridge was installed, approximately one-third of that new bridge was installed on my property. Therefore, I think I should have some say in the activity, you know, that takes place coming to and from Highway 66. So I just wanted to clarify that. There might be comments later, may, you know, conflict with that, but at least I wanted to put that out there. A question, you know, for the committee, and I don't know who was around in 2018. When I was here for the meeting, first off, there was no public notice that there was going to be an application for a CUP, for Warrior Risen. There was no letter sent to the immediate neighbors. We heard word of mouth about an hour before the meeting. So we came out, sat in. It was supposed to be a dude ranch with a lodge, a barn, a place for, you know, veterans to come, and Julia Week with a business sponsor. We fully support that. And if you go back and check the minutes from November, my wife and myself fully support, you know, the ranch activities in regards, you know, to that. But my question is, you know, at that meeting, emails were shared that Lance Evans, along with the ranch, shared communication about extending that to include weddings, outdoor concerts, parties, and so forth. It was done illegally. It was not part of the original CUP. But yet, tonight, we're here to talk more about a CUP and expanding that to a private resort. Porterville doesn't need a private resort. We're okay with the ranch, you know, let the veterans come, you know, the agriculture, you know, if they want to sell their wares, you know, that's perfectly fine, and we're okay with that. But a couple of things that happened since the November meeting, and it was referenced earlier by someone else. On November 26, Saturday after Thanksgiving, I found three duck hunters hunting in my front yard along the river and discharging the shotgun, well within 600 feet of my house. They were trespassing, and they discharged the gun. There was probably six or eight other neighbors that they were with in the safety zone as well. DWR came out, sheriff came out, they handled it, and I think it was handled properly. My concern is, when I approached one of the hunters, I said, "Who gave you permission?" And he said, "John did." And I said, "What ranch did John give you permission to hunt?" And he said, "The South Ranch." Well, John did his part. The South Ranch is a couple miles up the street, and there's nobody nearby. My concern is, if you have a situation where somebody who works at the ranch knows the north and knows the south, and still gets it wrong, and discharges a firearm, then what happens if you open this up to a private resort where anybody in their own comes along, and they see animals or target shooter, whatever? We may have a similar situation. So it is a safety concern. On Christmas Day, around lunchtime, somebody came up to the ranch, and we're target shooting right next to the greenhouse. Greenhouse is 340 feet from my house. Again, discharging firearms within a safety zone of 600 feet. So that's a concern, and this is, you know, the second time that this has occurred since the first time that I reported, you know, at the last meeting. Just a couple of questions. With the bridge only being, the studies are done, and the information's public. The bridge is 15 feet wide. If there's going to be 100, 150, 200 vehicles entering from Highway 66 on that bridge that has one traffic in, one lane, I understand you, Dot, did your study about how many left turns and things like that. What happens when you only have one way in and the same way out? And there's an emergency. Again, the bridge is only 15 feet wide. You can only have one vehicle, one small vehicle, you know, go across. You can't even try to get to across. It's a safety concern. The private road is 25 feet wide for most of the private roads. I will be moving my pasture fence and putting it right on the property line this spring, and it's gonna reduce the private road down to about 17, 18 feet. So my question is, what will that do then to the studies that were done where 30 feet are required to have clearance at all times for first responders and emergency vehicles? What is the real purpose of Warrior Risen Ranch? And I'm sure you guys know that on December of this year, the Summit Land Conservancy issued a press release, and I think this is great, that the Slicky family donated or regulated some property, you know, to the conservancy, and not, you know, put it up for sale and, you know, develop it and things like that. But, you know, a couple quotes, and I am leading up to something with this. "Has officially closed on 5,048 acres in Porterville. Quote, 'Warrior Risen provides rehabilitative services programs for first responders and your families,'" quoting John Slicky. "When you stand back and look at the beauty and riches of the land, you begin to understand the potential impact on your family and its potential impact on the veteran community. Warrior Ranch was created for veterans and their families who can visit the ranch and partake in all that it has to offer,' end quote." KSL article, February 14, 2023. "Morgan County Gives Up Land Development Rights To Keep Helping Veterans. We feel," quote, "we feel there's a need for veteran communities specifically to come out here and partake in the horse therapy, counseling, family history," Slicky said. And that's the whole, that's what whole families do out here for a week at a time. "It's all paid for through donations and private funding. What is needed in this world is not more money, it's more character, and I think this ranch fills character," end of quote. I agree with that. So with that said, specifically talking about some of the bullet points, on page four of the application, 8-8-48-B1, a guarantee of sufficient water supply. "The Warrior Risen Ranch shares a common well with the Clemmons's at 3275 South Highway 66. This well is on our property. They have a pump, we have a pump. Last summer, WRR drilled a new well for the horse barns. The question is, was this new well connected to the lodge? I can't answer that. The existing water pump is still in use on our property. With the increased activity with the private resort or whatever is finally approved, what happens when our well runs dry?" Page five of the application, B2. "Property is served by septic. Was its size to accommodate a private resort and corresponding activities? The ranch is proposing selling barbecue meals on Saturdays during the summer months. Will they adhere to the same codes required by restaurants in Morgan? How will the Morgan Restaurant owners feel about having a newcomer up the street competing, you know, for their business?" On page nine, there was a nice job done showing the new parking stalls and where vehicles will park when they come to the ranch. But it also showed the concert location. It's also where the weddings are set up. So if you take a look at that graph, you'll see they're one of the same. Weddings are located 120 feet from our house. Concert and stage is 180 feet from our house. Our privacy fence is 90 feet along our property line from our house. What steps have been taken to mitigate noise and floodlights? The answer to that is none. And last night, I believe you got a copy of the notes that I sent to you guys, and there's a link for an acoustic fence that maybe, you know, should be considered, you know, to help mitigate, since there's been no mitigation taken place. It's also mentioned, you know, about quiet time. You know, it's from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. That is not adhered to. So it's one thing to put it on paper. The reality is, it's never, never followed. On page 15, the last paragraph, or let me, let me back up. Can you imagine what it's like to have up to 300 people within less than 200 feet of your backyard and your deck? How are we to enjoy our backyard and deck in the summer? Page 15, last paragraph, quote, "In regards to noise ordinances and maintaining the tranquil serenity or serenity of the property, we instruct all groups that activities generate excessive noise must conclude by 10:00 PM," end of quote. This claim is not adhered to. "As recently as January 28, 2023, there was a party held on a Friday night outside at the fire pit that lasted well into the night up till 11:30 with loud and obnoxious carrying on." Prior to that, and you can check the records, Morgan County Sheriff has been called... Prior to that, and you can check the records, Morgan County Sheriff has been called on several occasions when a noise popped. In conclusion, as mentioned at the November, support the original ranch concept. We do not support all the liberties and migration of scope to the original application. The ranch has made no effort to fit within the community nor be good neighbors. What steps are being taken to protect the property values of our homes and our neighbor's homes? The Schlichtys own a property at the South Ranch where they're building a home. There is plenty of open space with no immediate neighbors. If they want to have concerts and weddings, why not have them there and keep the original concept of a place for veterans and their families to come and enjoy the peace and tranquility at the ranch location? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We did get your email, but since you've read all those points, we don't need to read it into public record.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Public comment? Nope, going once, going twice? All right. We are going to move out of public comment and onto item number one on our agenda.
Item number one is application number 22.063. It's located at approximately 3265 South Highway 66. This is a continued item from the November hearing. It has been continued multiple times due to UDOT requirements as well as property issues. With that said, notifications were sent out correctly back in November. Letters were mailed out. The notice, notices were posted where they needed to be posted. I can't speak for why the mail didn't arrive at, at the Clemens house. But I was there when the, when the letters went out and when the notifications were posted. So with that said, the requirements that the planning commission required of John Schlichty have, have been met. He submitted a site plan showing a number of parking spaces where that parking is going to occur. He went through the UDOT approval process and received approval from UDOT. It was a conditional approval. There are stipulations and conditions that UDOT is going to require of those events from posting warning signs that an event is a special event is occurring. They will also have to apply with UDOT to get special event permits. And then those stipulations can be added as stipulations on, on a conditional use permit. That said, the shooting of firearms is not really an issue with the CUP. People are allowed to shoot on their, their property. It's a legal issue, and I would encourage the property owners to contact the sheriff if that occurs. As far as the bridge is concerned, the, the bridge schematics that were submitted to us show that the bridge is 16 feet, 11 inches and three quarter, 11 inches, three quarter wide. So it's just under 17 feet, not, not 15. Our engineer has inspected that bridge, reviewed the specs. It was installed according to those specs as far as our engineer could determine. As part of the UDOT approval process, Mr. Schlichty was required to put in AB base between the road and the bridge to bring it up to code, and additional material will be placed there, and that will be done before May, before May 15th, 2023, which was in the material that I forwarded to you from UDOT. Staff is recommending approval with that. It's a condition, as it's a conditional permit, conditional use permit, the state statutes see that as an allowed use, a permitted use with conditions, and as long as the negative impacts that, that could come up from that are reasonably mitigated, it, it is required to be approved. So with that said, staff is recommending approval, and that, that can answer any questions or if you...
Matt, if you can start. Just some clarification, since the last point was the bridge. So has the, has the fire marshal had any, do they have any input into, into that, or is that strictly just UDOT? Hey, this is, this is the traffic study?
Yeah, it's UDOT Road.
So you may not know this, but if UDOT, if they did it in the winter, does UDOT, they base that off of the traffic that they've measured all year round and, and their calculations? I imagine that's what their, their engineers would do.
Yeah, when they do traffic impact analysis, it's not just during the winter months. Obviously, winter traffic is lower. But you'll notice that in the UDOT stipulations, they talked about peak hours. So they were stating a maximum of 25 left turns in a peak hour. The peak hours are typically six to nine in the morning and three and seven at night. Peak hours are typically correspond with the rush hour traffic.
Okay. So if there, if there were any safety concerns from the width of the bridge, the UDOT study is, the UDOT is the one that makes that determination, not the, not the fire marshal determined?
That's correct. UDOT, since it's a UDOT Road, they had to go through a modified access approval process, and they submitted a traffic impact analysis. I read that analysis, and it did include all the events that they were proposing. The traffic study focused on the events that would generate the largest amount of traffic. And so UDOT approved, approved that, that modified approval, access approval, and that came in probably about three weeks ago.
I do have a follow-up on that. So has the fire marshal looked at this application? Has he been out on site to see the bridge? Cause...
No, typically, we...
I can answer that.
Well, we'll wait till the time when you come up then. We'll get you.
We'll ask out, cut that.
Okay.
Anybody else for staff?
I had a couple of questions, Josh.
Sure.
On, I didn't really see it in a report on sewer and whatnot. What does it take for 300 people on an event to use a restroom on average?
We don't regulate sewer and we don't regulate water.
What is it, what's it gonna happen when it overflows and runs down?
Right. I can't answer that. Those questions, those things are regulated. Water's regulated through the Utah Division of Drinking Water, and sewer is regulated through the Weber Morgan Health Department. One of the stipulations that we add into all of the, the staff reports is that they need to follow all state, local, and federal regulations. And so as part of their construction, they would have had to get approval through Weber Morgan Health, and they would have had to get approval through Utah Division of Drinking Water.
So are they in place? They have studies for 300 people using a bathroom at night?
I can't answer that.
What about the water?
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Shared well? Do we know what that produces and what they can take? 300 people is a lot of water.
Is that related to the building permit when the building was built?
They would have had to produce some documentation during the building permit process, but that was a while ago, so I can't speak to that either.
I, I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the, I'm curious about the alcohol. That would work. And again, it's numbers to me, but how would that work for a vendor to come in and provide alcohol for people? What is the county's, I guess, fingers in the pie? How does that work with us?
Any vendor that they have at those events should have a business license with the county if they're doing business in the county. That would be handled through the county clerk's office as well as ours. We would do a zoning verification of it. But as far as serving liquor, they would have to have their state certifications.
Okay. So just pulling on that thread a little bit more, they, there's a lot of questions about who, who will enforce. So there's, there's some discussion about, you know, in, in the past, there, there's incidents that, that may or may not be related to the CUP, but they're, but they're incidents. So what's the county's role in enforcing these things?
The county's role, if there's an emergency issue, then the county sheriff would take, take that or fire department.
Here comes our answer.
Yeah. Some of the buildings, so.
I can help with that a little bit.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I could, no, I just was gonna sit back there as long as I could.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as like criminal activity, that would be the sheriff's department. And then they're the fact finder. Anything that they find, they would refer to my office for screening and charges. And so as far as the firearms, that was something that was brought up, trespass nuisance, things like that, that can all be done. That's handled criminally. There's already laws on the books to handle that because that's not specifically related to the CUP.
Yeah, thanks for that. So the county has, has a role in, in this, but not part of the planning and not part of the CUP. It's, it's through, through criminal activity, like you said?
It, it depends, and that's a bad answer, but let me, let me make a distinction. So for the criminal activity, yeah, that would be through the sheriff's office. If they were violating a term of the conditional use permit that's related to planning and the parameters that were set upon that, then the zoning administrator has the ability to immediately revoke the CUP. And then the applicant would have an opportunity to apply or to request a hearing. And then depending on the evidence presented at that hearing, then the planning commission could permanently revoke or reinstate. And so that's the type of enforcement, but that would be violating a term of the CUP, not necessarily a criminal law or criminal ordinance, either in the county or state code.
And I do have a question regarding the serving of alcohol. How is that regulated?
So I was gonna try and pull up that in our code. It, they would, so there's restrictions on serving to minors, of course, but there is also, as, I mean, it's basically what Josh was saying, and I'll try and pull up the reference here. But they would have to get a business license with the clerk, and they would have to have all of their licenses with the state as well to serve that. And so, and then if they had someone who didn't have a business license or wasn't following the state law, then there's penalties for that as well, and those could extend to criminal penalties. But I'll try and find the code as you continue to ask questions.
Yeah, no, that's great. I think that my takeaway from that is that the state heavily regulates alcohol distribution. So they have to get, whoever's vending that would have to have the license from the state, not, not the county?
They'd have to have both. So if, if they are serving within the county, they do have to have a county business license as well, but, but they are more regulated.
Even a private vendor? If they had, like if someone for a wedding or something? Sorry to be late, but I just...
Yeah, let me see. I'll, I'll, I'll start looking through that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, there might be something else. Appreciate you being here. Actually, can you, can you talk while you're looking?
No.
You do such a great job. I want, I just wanted to kind of just reinstate kind of what Josh had already said about what is our, what does Utah code say about conditional use permits? And the reason I ask is that I always see different people. So I can't assume that everybody's here with us at step 12. Some people may have just be coming in, so I just want to kind of rehash that a little bit.
And I'll go ahead and pull up the actual code just so I don't misquote it.
For those that don't know, Garrett is our county attorney.
All right, so this is... Oh, sorry.
I said, it says it right there. I just realized.
Oh.
Good sign.
Yeah. So this is Utah Code 17-27A-506 on conditional uses. It says, "A county may adopt a land use ordinance that includes conditional uses and provisions for conditional uses that require compliance with objective standards set forth in an applicable ordinance. A county may not impose a requirement or standard on a conditional use that conflicts with a provision of this chapter or other state or federal law." And so I, I usually like to just discuss that the county, as far as division of powers, if you're thinking separation of powers is the, you know, horizontal division of powers is the vertical. And a lot of people think, well, it's the people, the local, the state, the federal, and that's how it works. Under Utah Constitution, I believe it's Article 11, it says that counties are legal subdivisions of the state. They're a political subdivision of the state, and so the county's power is actually delegated from the state. So the state is elected by the people. People elect the state, and then the state delegates to the counties. It's not that the people elect the county and then the county delegates to the states. And so I, I think that that's an important concept to understand here as why the state can dictate to counties that you can't adopt an ordinance that conflicts with state law. So anyway, now I'll move on to subsection two of that same code. It says, "A land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards." So I'll kind of break that down. The shall approve means that it's not a legislative decision, it's an administrative decision. And if the applicant has checked all the boxes that are required by state and local code, then the planning commission has no discretion to deny that. They have to approve it because it's administrative, meaning it's checking the boxes. Now, what the planning commission is tasked with is looking at the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects, and though, that's where the public can provide some input and explain some of the things that they feel are detrimental effects and what can be reasonably anticipated based upon past behavior, current behavior, or just the, the use itself. But it still shall be passed if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate those reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. So I don't know if you want me to go into this much detail. Maybe I'll just...
No, it's...
Is that enough? Or...
That's enough, enough for me, and I appreciate you being here. That's always good clarification for us to understand what our role is here. Any other questions while Garrett's up here? For you, Garrett, one of the things we wanted to do is we, we have a visual of conditions and findings reasonably, reasonable, yeah, reasonably anticipated, to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. So we'll, we'll put that up and kind of we'll walk, walk through some of those. But anything else that we capture from the public that we haven't had a chance to hear from staff? We'll certainly get the applicant an opportunity here.
I could just maybe add one more thing.
Yeah.
So there's the criminal side, there's the CUP side, and then there's also the civil neighbor dispute side. And not all, the, the county does not define property boundaries, does not define some of those things that are between neighbors. And I did also read the, the letter that was sent. I was copied on that, and it was, I think, maybe the third to last paragraph that talked about some of the things that can be done. And many of those things were civil, between neighbors, not involving the county. Part of the county would be the ability of the zoning administrator to temporarily suspend a conditional use permit and then perhaps refer it for permanent suspension. But other than that, everything else that was listed is between property owners and some of the remedies that they could pursue, but it's not through the county's jurisdiction.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Anybody else have questions?
I guess I have one question, Josh, about, like, for the parking lot and the roads, are they planning on? I didn't see anything that said anything about improving those.
No, I, I, you can ask the applicant, but I think those are to remain dirt. So...
Okay.
A sample negative impact in that would be dust, and so conditions or stipulations could be added for dust control, the, the four events, things like that.
Okay.
Chain, anything? No? Does anybody have anything else?
No, just the applicant.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll give the applicant a chance if they, if you want to, if you want to talk or you want to answer any of these things, you're welcome to it.
I'll make a quick email. Folks here are wanting to get their business done. Couple things. Fire marshal has been out. Dave Rich routinely inspects the lodge, does the fire suppression checks. He's seen... does the fire suppression checks. He's seen the roads. I've actually called him on the width of the road. We're fine. In terms of the bathrooms, we have eight bathrooms between the arena and the lodge, and four portable bathrooms. They handle the bathrooms for the concerts, so we feel we have sufficient for that. In terms of the water well, we own the well. The well may be on their land, but we own the well. We did install a second well to provide additional water as needed because there wasn't enough flow. At some point, we could relinquish our ownership to that well, but we own two wells at that location. In terms of alcohol use, one, we don't serve alcohol. Some of our veterans will go to the liquor store in Commerce Street and buy some liquor and bring it to their rooms occasionally. In the event that we have a wedding, a licensed alcohol provider, licensed, insured, bonded, would provide any alcohol for any type of event. We would not be providing that. I think those are the key points you all brought up that I wanted to address that Josh hadn't discussed. So I guess are there any other questions for me? Water in the parking lots, yes. So we prewater them before an event.
Okay, so it looked like some of the parking stalls were gonna be taking up some grass area. Were you planning on mowing those down?
Yep.
Okay, and then just-
Or gravel.
Okay.
We gravelled most of it, road base.
Okay.
You haven't thought about maybe brining the road rather than constantly watering?
Yeah, we could. We've done it for in Idaho. That may be a good option.
And then in your application, you talk about selling farm products. I believe the rule is that you can sell farm products for ninety days within a calendar year without a business license. So do you have a business license for-
We have a business license.
For each thing, though, for like the farm products?
Well, we consume a lot of the products in the lodge. The beef, the produce that we grow is consumed in the lodge and served to the veterans or those that come. We have not sold, I can't give you a dollar number, it's less than a thousand dollars in farm products sold. But we do sell beef products on a fairly regular basis. So I'm not sure if that requires a separate license just for beef products.
It might be, okay. Maybe we can make a condition about talking to the county clerk of what licenses are needed. Oh, another question. On your conservation easement, the parcel in the flat, like the sixty-acre parcel, was that part of the conservation easement?
No, everything-
So there's no restrictions? Everything's up in the hills?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I did find those codes talk about the beer or alcohol. So this is Warren County Code three dash two dash one, or I'll go to three dash two dash two. And it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to sell or give away beer at any public dance or gathering, or for any person to sell or give away beer to any person who is intoxicated or who is under the influence of an intoxicating beverage, or for any person to sell or to give away beer to any minor."
And we neither sell or give away liquor.
So, and that's at a public dance or gathering, public gathering.
So a wedding, is that?
Yeah.
So that you can't serve alcohol at a wedding?
Well, under our code, it's unlawful to.
Can I ask a question? I'm curious, Garrett, I've lost track of like the fairgrounds. Do they serve, can they serve beer and alcohol there?
There is an exception in our code for the fairgrounds specifically, but there are very strict rules that have to be followed for that. So we did have a beer garden at this last fair, but it was under section-
That's all right, I just wanted to know-
It's under a different section of our code that gives a specific exception for the fairgrounds upon approval of the County Commission, certain requirements for insurance and so forth. But that's the only, that's an exception. Also, I believe there's an exception through, I don't have that in front of me, I can keep looking for it, but for certain like restaurants where it's more, it's not at a public dance or gathering, it's a contained restaurant, and they have their licenses as well.
Okay, thanks for that.
So can I just ask John a couple of questions? Have you ever looked at what you suggest? Three hundred people sounds like a lot to me for four deposits and for eight stalls. Is that, do you know anything about what people usually use, or is that sufficient in your mind?
I know we have the health inspectors come out regularly to our restaurant do the inspections. I'm not sure what the ratio of bathrooms to people, three hun-, we've never had three hundred people, ever. But I will look into whoever handles that and to find out what that number ought to be. Because we could scale that up with four deposits if we had to.
Okay. And then water, you have concerns about your well providing that?
No, no, not with our new well, no. Not remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, the applicant? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Do you have that?
He's gonna pull up the screen and we'll-
Okay, he's gonna pull up the screen, thanks.
And he'll type what we want him to.
Oh, okay, gotcha. So I'll kick it off, just to get a list started here. That's our current, I was looking for the conditions.
We just need a blank page to-
Yeah.
We can show-
Thanks.
The harmful impacts, maybe list those, everyone-
Yeah, the potential-
Detrimental impact?
Detrimental impact, yeah, effects. Just to get it started, we'll open it for discussion, but just to get something started, I've got dust, noise-
Traffic.
Lights, sorry, dust, noise, traffic, lighting.
Lighting. The alcohol, we need to figure that one out.
Yeah, there's-
That's interesting.
There's a generic condition already in there, sorry, that they have to comply with all state statutes and all that.
Even with the alcohol one, you just comply with what more than county codes?
That's it, but we mean whether we want to make that a specific condition or not.
What's the recommended condition right now?
Well, I mean, that could be like one of the conditions.
Yes, that's what I mean, one of the conditions.
Alcohol's-
No, just for complying with all of the laws.
Yep.
Can you go just back to the packet again, the recommended motions you just had up? There was a condition on there that may cover it, so was conditions right after that, or? That's what I was looking for, thanks. So does that cover it, or is there a need to-
We may need to be specific on certain ones, I think, so there's some clarity.
So, I mean, the only hesitancy that, I think maybe to emphasize it, because if you include something, statutory construction is to exclude everything else.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, but maybe it's more an area of emphasis, but not to confuse and say, oh, well, we only have to comply with liquor laws and this and this even though there is a catch-all.
Well, so that's what I was thinking.
So what are you suggesting that we don't?
Well, go through the discussion, and then maybe we can refine it at the end.
So any other, what else have you guys heard over the discussions about concerns that need to be mitigated?
This one's hard, but the amount of people occupied to see it.
At events?
Is that a standard that we can apply to mitigate something, or is that something that needs to be-
That's what, I just on here, I don't like the word approximately, cause what's approximately?
Sure. So what I was thinking on that is that if noise, for example, is something that needs to be reasonably mitigated, then hours, amount of people-
That's hours of operation, number of events?
Number of events, those things could be standards that we can apply to reasonably mitigate those detrimental effects. That sound right?
And I don't know, so number of events-
I mean, is it a problem, or is it a mitigation attempt?
Right. So I think that the noise, it wouldn't necessarily, from my perspective, it wouldn't necessarily be number of events. It's the noise that you have resulting from those events. And so to limit it in time is reasonable, you know, to not have it go throughout the night when people are sleeping and so on and so forth. But as far as, I mean, I can have a party at my house every night if I want, you know, I mean, within reason, right? I guess if I'm doing something that's disorderly conduct and there's a criminal, you know, I can have the police called out and maybe be charged. But I don't know that it would say, well, you can only do it this amount of days. I could technically have a party every day as long as it's done by ten.
And that would include concerts? I mean, concerts are kind of a special event.
Yeah, I think concerts may be different.
So we can maybe limit concerts? So maybe put hours of operation? Number of special events or concerts? As a reminder.
Anything else you guys captured?
And then here's another question with business license. That is required by our county. So you suggest we don't need to make that a condition that all vendors have this-
So, well, if the vendors don't, and it could be reported for a criminal prosecution, but it could also have an effect on CUP. So if it was for criminal charges, and then it's indicated that your CUP was based upon applying all the laws. And we didn't, so that would be a reason to suspend it or reason.
I don't think it's necessary to make it a condition that-
That the condition that all law to appear to-
CUP covers everything.
Includes that as well. And maybe you could just say, we would like to put emphasis on the following so that you can emphasize it without undermining the catch-all so that we're not excluding all the other laws. And that's a way to go about it.
Anything else?
You know, on other CUPs, we have fencing. I don't know if that's something you need to think about.
Well, I think fencing could be a standard that could be applied in many cases. Maybe, but I think what we're kinda focused on here is what's the potential detrimental effects? And then what standards can we apply to reasonably mitigate that?
I was trying to remember, why we put fencing on other ones?
Various things, containment, say to your kids when there's construction or access to something dangerous machinery. I don't know if the fence, personally, I don't think the fence has been reasonably mitigated any noise, especially out there in weather, then.
The geography of the echoing.
Anything else that you can remember that you're thinking of, not, we'll just start working down these and maybe discuss our findings.
I did have one thing that came up, that if the fence is moved, and it would make that private lane, and this might be a question for Josh. I believe on a private lane for emergency apparatus vehicles, it has to be at least twenty feet wide. And if it makes it nineteen, then the condition, you know, a specific condition would be to maintain that twenty-foot access, and they may need to extend it further onto that property for that emergency apparatus access.
Have they moved the fence?
No, but I do believe that he said that Mr. Bunton said he's gonna move his fence to the property line, which would effectively reduce the twenty-five feet to maybe seventeen, right?
So maintain twenty foot-
Like a private road or no? For, yeah, for a fire apparatus access.
So the next one would be maintain, maintain appropriate road width?
For fire apparatus?
For fire apparatus.
So maybe I'm receiving a little more clarity on my own comments as I talk more, so. I think it's okay to be specific because that's actually required by the international fire code, that's twenty foot. And so am I doing the same thing, or am I making same things specific? So I think you can make the specifics, and we'll just say, adhere to all other.
At the end.
Legal, even though the fire code may have updated.
Okay.
And so they wouldn't have to continue to update because it's a snapshot, you know, this is what you, you know, in time, and now you'll have a legal non-conform use if they expand it at some point in the future. It's grandfathered in, that's kind of the, yeah, the legal non-conforming.
So change number nine to say, maintain twenty-foot road width for fire apparatus access.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Okay, I will. Okay, bye.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's go up to number one, let's talk about dust. If dust is a potential detrimental effect, how can we mitigate that?
Will be the condition.
So our findings on there would be to, well, they're already putting water in the road, right? So what would be our attempt to mitigate this?
I don't really care what they do, as long as it's mitigated. If they wanna do it with water or brine or-
So dust control methods must be used to minimize dust? Is that not specific enough?
It's not very specific.
Dust control methods such as water or-
Brine.
Brine solution?
Will be used.
Will be used during events?
And maybe just say, are the events the only thing that would produce high traffic?
No.
So I would just say-
Will be used.
Yeah, during periods of high traffic.
Okay, during periods of high traffic.
You wanna put high-traffic county events, just for a little more clarity on it? Are high-traffic enough?
I think high-traffic.
Yeah, I mean, it's not defined. High-traffic could be twenty, could be-
So maybe you could just say, yeah.
That's true.
Will be used, period? Controlling this is such-
I hate to say will be used is appropriate, but that does sound-
Or just will be used.
I think the, from the concerns that were brought up, I think one of the concerns is- concerns is who's enforcing, and is it specific enough to explain or verify that there's a violation or not?
Josh, can you interpret high-traffic?
I would be more specific and state during the events, weddings, or whatever. I would be more specific, because at least then it gives me away from enforcing.
During high-traffic events such as weddings and other, what, weddings and concerts? Such as weddings and concerts?
And other events, yeah.
Weddings, concerts, and other events. Okay. Noise, I feel, I really do feel for the neighbors, the distance. I don't know what would mitigate noise, I don't know if there's a fence, hours of operation?
The hours of operation would.
Would be the most reasonable thing you could do. So hours of operation will be limited to, or hours of operation for...
Events?
All events?
Or weddings?
Weddings.
Or is that a event?
Wedding, concerts, and other events? Use the same language?
So, could you, like, for concerts, be a little bit more specific than for weddings? And the reason why, in my mind, a wedding could be...
They could get music, yeah.
Yeah, but you've got a more concentrated noise issue with the concert, right? It's just constant.
Sure, but, no, I agree. Just trying to keep it as simple and enforceable as possible.
Right, but it's like if you don't give Josh some direction of what it is, and... And part of, for me, with the noise thing, I don't like that it can go till 10 o'clock.
Maybe nine.
I think that should be nine, 9:30, so by 10 o'clock, they're out of there, and then you don't have your noise. Because even if the concert's over at 10, you still got the noise of everybody leaving and going, so I think that the event should, and with everything done by 10.
So you could say no...
Is there a noise ordinance in Morgan County?
No.
Is there a noise ordinance in Utah?
Not state code.
No, but there is a public nuisance crime.
At 10 p.m.
And so, I think, did we find something in our ordinance, Josh, about conditional uses for noise?
I thought it said that time limits could be added.
Yeah, I think...
Hours of operation.
Yeah, I think it does say that, and so to say, hours of operations for wedding, concerts, and other events, or I would just say, no weddings, concerts, or other events will be held between 9:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. or something like that.
Can I ask a question? We have, I mean, does this, does this go for...
I totally understand, if you just give us a chance to work through these things.
Oh, I'm just wondering if it goes over to...
No, I understand. What we'll do, I have no problem asking you guys to come back up and to get your comment on this as the applicant, no problem. I just want you to give us an opportunity just to work through this if we would, and then we'll have some dialogue. Thank you. Back to the verbiage you were saying?
So, yeah, no weddings, concerts, or other events will be held between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m.
Pro him.
Okay. Got it down, we can go back and look through it. Traffic.
Okay.
We've got the UDOT study already, so how do we...
I've got UDOT recommendations. Do you have?
So that'd be...
It came in an email.
Yeah, Josh has it.
They had, they had three conditions. One, that a law enforcement officer is there to direct traffic. Two, that special event signs be placed 1,000 feet from the access lines on both sides. And that, that they'd limit the number of left turns during peak hours. So as long as the events don't occur during those peak hours I talked about, since 9:00 a.m., and 3 to 7 at night, then it doesn't apply.
So would it, is it, would it be cleaner to say...
It's these three, maybe to have those as our conditions?
Well, can you just put in there that they are to comply with the UDOTs?
Well, memos get lost and...
The other thing that UDOT is going to require them to do for every event, like concerts, is get a special event permit from UDOT.
I think that's one of them.
Okay, so how about we just pass this on, and then you...
Maybe read them, so the public knows what they are.
So for traffic, the condition would be to comply with UDOT's recommendations, to, all UDOT recommendations, including that they obtain a special use permit from Utah Department of Transportation, Region 1, office annually for the concert events. Place two temporary 36-by-36-inch W-21-1 special event ahead signs on portable signs. Approximately 1,000 feet prior to the ranch's access for both northbound and southbound directions on SR-66. Follow UDOT standard drawing that's attached for additional sign and placement details. Place the signs so they don't block any access or create an obstruction to vehicles. And then the last one is to provide a law enforcement officer with a marked vehicle to direct traffic in and out of the ranch's access for both pre- and post-event traffic. Okay?
Don't we go give that to Jeremy?
Yeah, we can pass that down.
Question on that one is, is, you take the law enforcement, does that mean, I mean, because one time he talked about having, paying to have the cop up there, so that it's coming out of their pocket versus the county?
I'm sure you'd have to work that out with the county if you're requesting...
Yeah, and I mean, how does that, how does that work? Because I think we've got to be careful that we don't place a burden upon our officers for that. Wouldn't they maybe, Josh?
In other communities that work in, places that hold special events would hire off-duty officers, and they would pay them, they would be responsible for paying the off-duty officers. So they weren't non-duty at the time, but they're still law enforcement.
Should we say at owner's expense, or can we...
I think that that's reasonable, just given the limited number of deputies that we have within the county.
Yeah, I just hate to put a condition on that affects, you know, that we don't have control over.
So, yeah, Jeremy can add, well, when he gets there.
Yeah, you can just summarize for now for us, and, yep, just so we can see it up there.
But that last one about the officer, just say at owner's expense? For the officer one, that last one you're going to be putting up?
Yeah, just add at owner's expense.
It's about provide...
Yeah. Okay, anything else on traffic?
I think it mentioned something about five miles per hour through the area, do we want to put that up?
UDOT did?
No, not UDOT, but it was in there, how they were going to control it.
Five, that's, that's really slow.
I don't know how you would...
Not UDOT, UDOT didn't say it.
He's just wondering if we limit...
They were saying they were going to do...
Limit the speed.
Five mile per hour speed, if you have little kids, veterans' kids on those roads, can have parking areas, so we impose ourselves five miles per hour.
Okay, that's good, and again, just give us a few more minutes to work through this, I promise we'll be...
He's answering the question.
I couldn't remember where I read it.
We'll just, we're going to throw some stuff out there, and then we're going to give you time, so it's...
That's on the private road, not, not a public road?
Right.
Yeah, private road. All right, lighting.
And here too, well, again, it's Morgan County's lighting code.
We have a dark sky over us.
So, do we need to...
So lighting, I mean, I think it's good to say that we addressed it here in this meeting, right, that we...
I think so, yeah, so shall comply with the county's dark sky ordinance.
Eight-six dash forty-four.
Shall comply with the county's dark society ordinance, eight-six dash forty-four. Okay, alcohol, shall comply with state and county regulations?
Just say that now, which means no alcohol served.
But the...
I didn't realize that.
County code might change, so. So hours of operation, did we address hours of operation already in mitigating the other one, or is it...
Yeah, I think so.
I think you can still address hours of operation here, because that was specifically for noise.
Okay.
Because the hours of operation for the concert, it may continue to 10 as they're leaving, but the noise has to stop at 9. Does that make sense?
So the leaving would still be part of the hours of operation?
Yeah, I think you have to. So recommendations for hours of operation? I mean, for the entire CUP, this one is, right?
Well, I think you'd have to distinguish between events and overnight stays as well, because technically the overnight would continue, but...
That's why I'm wondering if we didn't fix or reasonably mitigate what the problem was.
It's mainly for events.
Yeah.
Overnight stays, I don't think...
Farming, it's still, too, running tractors and...
And there's, you know, we're not going to regulate agriculture.
The thing you're concerned more about is the events, it's not...
Staying overnight, or coming to eat there.
Yeah, otherwise, nuisance stuff, right? Well, you still have your personal type stuff, you're coming in and out, and whatever, you know, that's not part of the condition, so...
I think we're okay.
Okay.
He can strike six.
Number of special events and concerts? What will be accomplished there if we've, to Garrett's point, if we've...
But didn't they, wasn't there somewhere where they listed kind of what they had? I can't remember where I read all this.
Eight to 10?
Yeah, something like that.
For both the concerts and the wedding and special events? That could change, though, when people start finding out there are venues available. I'll try and book it.
What detrimental, what detrimental...
In his narrative?
...can we mitigate with this, with number six?
I don't know if there's anything beyond the noise, I think the noise...
And dust.
And the dark sky.
Traffic.
Yeah, traffic, lighting, noise.
The only thing I think of personally, I would hate to live there and have a concert going on weekly. Or every night, you know? I don't feel like that this is the atmosphere to have a concert on a regular basis now. To have them periodically, you know, that's, I don't see a personally problem with it, but I think it...
I think limit concerts.
There should be kind of a limit on that, if they're wanting concerts, more than they need to go to a different venue.
So would you think periodically would be like twice a week?
I think that's too much.
Too much?
I think the difficulty to get in there is, what's the reasonably anticipated detrimental effect that we're mitigating?
That we have a...
That hasn't been addressed.
Right, noise, traffic.
Well, but all we've done is hour of operation, we haven't done frequency. And to me, that's detrimental in the sense if I got listened to it on a, every night or something. That's what I say, I don't feel like a concert fits that area on a regular basis.
Then I would suggest we go back and look at noise, and see if there's other reasonable things we could do to mitigate, such as frequency. All right, so if noise is what we're trying to mitigate, then this, I think this would be the appropriate place to say, time and frequency. So, what frequency would you recommend?
Well, I was trying to see what they had recommended.
Yeah, and we'll ask them in just a second. Just put a number up there, and we'll give an opportunity to go through it. Just trying to keep it going and...
Six to eight.
What is it?
Six to eight.
A year? Okay, so just put six to eight events a year.
Well, that was concerts.
Six to eight concerts a year. And then we'll give a little more input from the applicant.
We'll talk with the applicant.
Okay, scroll back down. What is no more than six to eight?
No more than eight.
It says, here it is, Friday night, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., typically eight to 10 concerts annually.
Okay, so 10.
No more than 10.
And then it says the same thing about weddings. They're estimating that they could have eight to 10 weddings.
So no more than 20 concerts or weddings?
Then they could all be concerts.
Well, they're saying eight to 10 weddings, eight to 10.
Yeah, but you've got to say, you have to separate them, or you could have 20 concerts.
Or 10 weddings. We'll talk with the applicant on that.
All right, let's scroll down. Okay, so lighting, alcohol, number of events, scratch that.
You can take number two.
Seven.
Fencing, I think you can.
Okay, any other comments on this? Nope, the applicant wants to come up, thanks for your patience, appreciate it. Would you mind coming up, and we're just going to walk through these with you?
I think the only part we would have concerned with, so the answer to all your questions were in here. Y'all should have talked with it. Eight to 10 events, as we listed before, 10:00 p.m., shutting down at 10:00 p.m. We shut down at 9:00, by the way, but it could go, concerts are not open until 10:00. In regards to my neighbor wanting to move his fence to narrow the driveway, if that's his intentions, we'll just simply widen our driveway to the north, if that's course in that use.
So that condition makes sense, then, just maintain that 20 foot?
One more thing, you talked about a parking attendant, do you still...
We have them, yeah. Pay parking attendants, we pay all the cops, we feed them, and we pay them, we've always done that. $100, you're not paying a cent, you're a hero. I am.
Nope, two?
Yeah, all the counties in Utah at 10:00 p.m. I'm not sure why we think we should be at 9:00 p.m. You look at Salt Lake, you look at Utah, all the other counties, you can pull them up right now, take a look at them, they're 10:00 p.m.
It's a residential...
Okay, Garrett, is that reasonable?
Residential neighborhood.
Think about that, let's go on to number three, thanks.
Well, I have a question on number three, though.
Yeah, go on.
So, when we're addressing events, oh, just, so, other events, does that include our family events? Because we have had, we had a family wedding out there one time, and the cops were called, and it was our own family, so I don't, what does that cover?
I wish I was Garrett, but I would say that it's...
CUP doesn't cover family.
That's what I was going to say, CUP is only your...
Okay, all right, I just wanted to...
Yeah, it's going to be hard to distinguish, that's something you're going to have to work through, you know, conflict resolution, but...
It doesn't exempt you from criminal, like if there's a, you know, if you're up at 2:00 in the morning and causing a disturbance?
I don't, I go to 3:30 sometimes.
Garrett was still doing some research on two, so let's look at three. Basically, just asking to comply with the UDOT's recommendations. The only additional thing to put in there is to stipulate that you pay for the officer. Okay, lighting, just comply with our ordinance? Alcohol, comply with state regulations and regulations, maintain that 20 foot? Alcohol comply with state regulations and rules, maintain that twenty foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe business license that-
Um, for what?
For-
Well, we're also gonna have Josh's generic, um, generic one on there.
Right, it's still there, it's part of his planner's report.
So can you just copy and paste that one?
From the planner's report.
Ask and sell and serve food and everything else there, it needs to be amended a little bit, we'll amend it, I'm not sure what other amendment needs to happen to it, but we'll look into it.
Okay, just that-
Jeremy, no, I was just looking for that one, the generic one that says also comply with-
Well, we need number three-
All state and federal codes or whatever.
Number three and four under planner's recommendation on page two. We need to add those to the attendees park within designated parking area, and then number four. Just, the first, the first two are kind of, well-
Three does not have any, you look at the plan, there is no parking on my, it's not shared, it's my private road. Because I need to keep access for fire trucks and so forth coming down there, so there's no parking on the private street.
For my benefit, would you copy and paste it?
But there shouldn't be any parking along it, and I think that would be good.
For safety reasons, it shouldn't.
So designated parking area is only within the property and not along the shared road. Okay, that was one that we had already come up with before. This man has used Microsoft Word before. Okay, those are the, so in addition to the ones we just discussed and our findings, we're adding the ones from the staff report. Now, eight is, seems like it overlaps with three, so Garrett, were you able to think a little bit more about that at nine PM? Because that's what we had before, and then at three, number three, we said, what's the verbiage on three, can you scroll up please? It's two, excuse me. So rather than just say after nine, we're saying not between nine and eight, that's all we-
So we can do way with that other one, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's saying the same thing.
It's saying the same thing, yeah.
So I think we need to clarify, you're asking for the noise-
For that.
-music and the weddings to be done by nine, but giving them until ten to clear out, correct? Okay, you might want to add that.
Put that back in.
Well, I think you can give the hours of operation till ten. But the noise-
And just say that the hours of operation doesn't apply to overnight stays.
To what?
To overnight stays.
Okay.
Technically, it will go beyond that for the overnight.
You have to give them time to get out after the concert's over. You know, and if they want to mingle for a little bit.
Yeah, so the goal is to have the noise ended by the ten, by the ten PM, that's the goal.
But do you want the ten o'clock?
I think that's your hours of operation, but concert's done at nine.
So what type, hours of operation, what time do you want to be able to start in the morning?
I can start six. No, I would think seven to eight is, I mean, eight o'clock for two is probably adequate.
Copy and paste out the two.
But I think that's what they had on there was eight.
Point of two was to say this is power limiting the noise.
So hours of operation would be a separate one, down at the-
Because it may still be operating for them leaving, but it's not the loud noise at the concert.
Yeah.
It's just the operation.
So it applies to the general CUP, not specifically to the events and the noise?
So hours of operation will be?
From eight to ten.
So just get rid of that first part of eight, hours of operation?
I think that's what he put in here on that one was eight to ten, that seems a-
Yeah.
-reasonable time for operation. It's just more of that concentrated noise that's beat down by nine o'clock.
Again, we're not talking ranching operations, right?
No, ranching is not part of your condition.
That's just in there.
Ranching is not.
I don't think most will complain about that.
I don't know, but ranching isn't part of the CUP.
No, but it's-
Go back to the packet, however it was worded before, we're just circling right back.
Okay.
Well, maybe we didn't have it in there before.
For hours of operation, right?
Yeah. But that one's, you know.
Our addendum for this conditional use permit was ten, ten PM.
Or your prior one?
This is what we discussed last time I was here. Now we're sort of re-discussing it.
To ten PM? Okay. Overnight, yes, okay, overnight stays.
Okay. All right, can you go back over the top again, let's just look at them one more time. Dust, noise, traffic. Okay? Lighting, alcohol, roads. What's seven?
That was, that was one of Josh's original ones, I don't know if-
What's that?
You're recently mitigating-
Through the other-
So we can take that one out.
Yep, just strike that.
That was Josh's instructions to us.
Okay. And then eight is don't park along the road for safety. And then adhere to all other road safety guidelines. Okay? I think we have an accurate description of the conditions we're proposing here. Okay. Thanks, thank you, I appreciate you coming back up. All right, so given that discussion, does the planning, does the planning commission have any other further discussions or questions, or is somebody ready for a motion?
How do we refer in the motion to what we have up on the screen?
Uh, just, that motion includes, so if you read that motion, it says, and as modified by the conditions and findings below.
And he's added him on that, okay. Perfect.
Okay, so there it is. Anybody?
Are you ready? Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Schlichty Conditional Use Permit Amendment, application number twenty-two point zero-six-three, located at serial number zero-one dash CRKS dash zero-zero-zero-two, and parcel ID number zero-zero dash zero-zero-six-zero dash two-one-eight-three off of Highway sixty-six, Morgan County, Utah, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and as modified by the conditions and findings below.
Okay, scroll all the way down so we can look at that. Okay? Further, please? Okay. All right, so the motion is to approve that, with those conditions right there. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so on to item number two, which is another lengthy discussion, so if folks are gonna leave their room, we'll give you just a minute, if you're gonna stay, that's fine too. We're gonna be here for quite some time and we welcome our neighbors to stay with us, but we'll just give it just a minute for people to leave if they want. Okay, item number two.
Uh, item number two is application number twenty-two point zero-seven-three, Legacy Hills subdivision phase two. The property is located off of Morgan Valley Drive, Legacy Hills Road. The area is approximately sixty-five point seven acres in size and the current zoning is eight-twenty. The first phase of this development is three lots, it's currently under construction. The, you can identify the subdivision with the metal rod iron that says Legacy Hills. This would be a second phase further along Legacy Hills Drive. Usually a small subdivision, you would approve as the planning commission, you're the approval authority. However, the proposal includes a street that's longer than seven-hundred-and-fifty feet in length, and as such, that requires county commission approval with the recommendation of approval from the fire department. Now, the fire department has sent a letter stating that they are okay with that, and so your job tonight is a recommendation to the county commission. With that said, staff has reviewed this application, county attorney, not county attorney, sorry, Garrett. County engineer and surveyor had no comments to date. The comments that they did have have been addressed with resubmital. With that, we are recommending approval with the stipulations included in the staff report, and with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
No questions for me, anybody? First half?
Mine is just that it's called phase two because it's not a phase, but I know its semantics.
I didn't name it.
I know you didn't name it, but it's just confusing because the first one wasn't phase one, it was-
Right.
Yeah.
Last time we talked about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet in the road, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, seven-hundred-and-fifty feet in the road, we're good.
We've had these discussions at length in the past before.
Yeah.
Disregard, not relevant. Okay, there's no questions for staff, we're happy to hear from the applicant if they so choose.
If there's any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer them, but-
Any questions for the applicant? No, thrice. Okay, if there's no discussion, if someone's ready to-
The only thing that needs to be done is on the staff's finding, number six is really a condition, it needs to be moved to the conditions.
So-
Finding number six.
What page is that?
Number one of the staff.
Page one.
Of that packet, under the packet.
That the engineer approves the drainage plans is a condition. It's on the first page of-
Time getting back.
Right there.
Yep, so six. Okay, I see. Someone wants to take a stab at a motion and just move item number six from the finding as number five of the condition? That's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, just move it to condition.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion, I move we recommend approval of Legacy Hills small subdivision preliminary and final plat to the county commission, application number twenty-two point zero-seven-three, allowing for a three-lot subdivision of land located approximately twenty-eight-one north Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report dated March ninth, twenty-twenty-three, with the additional following condition, number six, that the county engineer approved the drainage-
It'd be, yeah, it would be condition number five.
Number five?
Yeah, it'd be condition number five, but you're adding finding number six, yeah.
Finding number six.
Correct.
Got it.
Got it. Okay, got it. Wonder why I'm looking at you, Jeremy, I just wanted to say hi. Okay, so we have a motion with the addition of finding number six being added as a condition. Do we have a second for that motion?
All second.
A second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to item number three.
Um, I'm not gonna give the presentation for this, Jeremy's gonna give it. I did want to clarify, all notifications were done according to state statute. State statute does not require a map. Typically, we add the map as a courtesy to the residents. In this case, occasionally, the star on the map goes over the wrong property. For that, staff apologizes, but according to state statute, we have met all minimum requirements for notifications.
Okay.
Was, but was the agenda posted on the state website?
It was.
I- Can- The-
All items that are on the agenda were posted on the state website, the-
Agenda was not, though.
No, we posted the agenda.
Okay. I'm just going on the comment from the public, but okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. Item number three on tonight's agenda is for application number twenty-two point zero-eight-zero. This request is for approval of the Wasatch Industries CUP for the building that is currently leased by the county to the U.S. Forest Service at the Morgan County Airport, which lease is transferring to Wasatch Industries estimated around twenty-twenty-five, and is to be used as a fixed base operator or FBO with various other uses. Entrance to the lot in question is on West Willow Creek Road and identified by the parcel and serial numbers listed in your staff report. Josh, did you, I pulled up the code. So I wanted to highlight in Morgan County Code eight dash five H dash seven, the proper use is allowed at the airport of which this proposed use is one, can be granted with a conditional use permit and a business license. I'll read a portion of it, so no person, under commercial aeronautical activity, no person shall conduct a commercial activity of any nature that is based on or operated from the county airport unless conduct of that activity has been approved by the county council. Any aeronautical activity that is conducted as a commercial activity or enterprise, examples of which would be, there it is, fixed base operator or FBO. Moving forward kind of to around here, sales of aviation petroleum products is another part of the CUP, maintenance and repair of aircraft, sales of aircraft parts, et cetera. Any use falling under this category shall be conducted under the terms of both an appropriate conditional use permit and a business license, there in code. Every person conducting any form of commercial activity on or from the county airport must maintain a public liability insurance policy of a type and amount approved by the county council. This project is much like the Nine Line project from last year, pretty recently. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire or engineer comments, I spoke with Golden Barrett, he didn't have any specific comments for this application either. Staff is recommending approval. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
I've not seen any staff conditions. So is, with just that normal catch-all?
Yeah.
Shall comply with all.
State law, law, federal.
Okay.
Okay.
So same thing, conditional use permit, same exact conversation we had for item number one, with the addition that the, our code adds further stipulation that they have a business license and a CUP. What's that piece about the county council shall approve, is that?
So this would be considered kind of a C-three, it's a weird formulation, so the longest authority for this conditional use permit is the county commission, so your your, your recommend, your motion tonight would have to be a recommendation to the county commission, so just like Nine Line, we made a recommendation with county commission, the county commission then heard the Nine Line application like this one, and then there was a lease that the county commission worked out with the applicant.
Right. Okay, thanks for that clarification, that's, I heard that from the public as well, but I didn't think we had the, this was the appropriate place to make the decision for the airport. So the applicant has an opportunity, if they want to come up and speak, feel free to tell us whatever you like, or- Feel free to tell us whatever you like or address any of the public concerns if you like.
Yeah, be happy to. First, really what it is, FBO fixed base operators, just to provide, you know, the main purpose, provide fuel. Up there at the Morgan County Airport, there's, according to the FAA, AFD stands for Aircraft Facilities Directory, there's 117 planes there and zero fuel. And so all the pilots are currently buying their fuel from other airports. That money is going to other counties of, you know, sales tax, you know, fuel tax, whatever, flow tax. And this is an opportunity to bring those revenue dollars back up to the county. It's also just absolute, just out of convenience, you know. For right now, the closest airport is to Ogden. A lot of pilots are having to fly to Evanston to get fuel. And this makes it so that we can do it here. The fuel station is going to be a self-serve station. It's going to be located between whoever is familiar with the airport. There's a new hangar set that starts with AA and then across from it BB. There's currently planes.
Jeremy, if I always delay talking, if you don't mind? Sorry, page 10 of the. Okay. Might be helpful just to visualize it if you don't mind. I was looking at the whole staff reports, sorry.
Yes, Wasatch Industries.
Yeah, Wasatch Industries, page nine, excuse me. No, 10, that's what it says.
Hey, 11. Were you looking at?
Right here.
Oh, that one. I was looking at that. Okay.
Oh, you have a different one on 11?
Well, it's the same.
Yeah, either one of those would work. Thanks for your patience. There's been some, you know, concern with the fuel that we want to visualize.
Safety concern.
That works.
Yep, go up. Sorry.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, so the fuel tank will go right here. And there's already power that's run to that. It was part of a plan 15 years ago to put fuel there. And so there's, you know, that's where it's going to be. It's going to be in an above-ground tank, self-service, you know, just with credit card. The size of the tank is about 1,000 gallons. It's roughly the same size as the tankers that you see that haul the gas. So, you know, one gas truck will be able to bring it in, fill it up, and leave. As far as any concerns about adding aircraft traffic, additional aircraft traffic because there's fuel here, is a non-issue. Every other airport already has fuel, and so there's no reason that somebody's going to fly to the Morgan Airport to get, specifically to get.
I know that seems kind of weird, but if you could just tell us those questions, otherwise it just, just trust me.
Okay, all right.
It's easier if we have the dialogue. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Don't want me to repeat it?
Nope, nope. I heard you.
I have a safety concern with that above-ground tank that close to the runway. Decades ago, there was a fuel truck that was parked by hangar and there was equipment malfunction when a plane landed and narrowly missed that truck, which would have been catastrophic. So I do.
So a question on that. What regulations govern the placement and safety containment, grounding, et cetera? FAA does.
Yeah.
So.
So FAA has to, FAA, as far as I know, has already approved the siding of that. And, I mean, they have guidelines of how close it has to or can be to a runway.
My point was, it's very restrictive.
Will there be barricades or something in front of it?
There's. It's a containment wall, isn't it?
Yeah, there's containment walls there.
So it'll be a concrete containment wall that is also a barrier from driving up to.
Sorry.
I agree, but FAA is good.
If that's what it is, it is.
Control is pretty good.
No, I mean, things like this are always, they can be a little bit confusing if you're not familiar with airports, but and especially with FAA regulations and the only reason, I'm not dismissing the safety concern by any means. It's just I've been around this for 37 years now. That's very, that's normal. 1,000 gallon fuel tank, about the same size as the tanker trucks.
Right.
Barrier containment.
And the FAA preempts everything.
Yes, right.
They hold the corner of the market on air regulation, so.
Yes, we fund them from a special line of accounting in Congress, so they're well-funded. And they, but more restrictive by many means, but yeah. So the overlay, the approach, the takeoff, landing, all that stuff is FAA governs what can and can't, what is and what isn't safe. Again, I don't want to dismiss it. I just have a different perspective, I guess.
You do.
Going on the other use of the building, what we'd like to do is an avionics shop. Currently, there's one avionics shop that's in Bountiful. There's another one down, I think in Utah County. Currently, in order to get any avionics work done on an airplane, you're six months to a year out. Really just because there's no room to get them in. Also, to touch base on that, talking about traffic once again, if it's going to be, if it's going to bring in additional aircraft traffic. A full-service avionics shop is doing really, really well if it can do four planes a week. So it would bring in four planes additional traffic per week.
You talking on aircraft avionics or are you talking people shipping stuff in FedEx, working on it there, having a?
No, no, no. Just avionics shop is installing GPS systems in airplanes.
Okay. Okay. I was thinking, like, how are you coming in from other places for other aircraft or anything? You're just focused on this airport?
Correct.
Okay.
The revenue that that's going to generate for the county is huge money. An average airplane is roughly $20,000 to $25,000 just in the equipment. That times four is $100,000 a week that, you know, the county would be getting, you know, 5% of sales tax revenue based on that. You know, and so, you know, I really see this as a win-win for the county is, you know, having, you know, that kind of tax revenue brought in by literally four planes a week.
So some of the concerns that were raised, traffic, maybe we can talk a little more about that, noise.
Yeah, what about noise with the repair?
Sure, yeah. Noise generated from any of the activities from the FBO? And then there was a question about the berm. Do you know anything about that that?
That's.
Not related to this?
Keith's aware of it.
I'm aware of it.
You're aware of it, okay. So this is, but this is, from what I understand, help me if I'm wrong here, Garrett, but this is an existing building. They're asking for a CUP for a use inside of an existing building. Okay.
That's correct.
And this was also, I might add, that the Forest Service is still there for two years. So their existing lease is through 2025, you know, so all of this is going to be after that.
And I do have a question with the repair in the building with Mountain Green Sewer. Are the traps and everything already in place?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, or here, you're not familiar with the building?
You got to have fluid separators and stuff in the hangars.
There's, yeah, there's oil, there's oil-water separators in there. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, they're already there.
Yeah, there are enough.
Yeah, they have to be in there for the buildings themselves.
All the new hangars have those in them already.
But that's not a new hangar, is what I'm saying.
Oh, but I think they do have.
You think?
I'm pretty sure they have.
We can, we can always say, you know, with an emphasis on Mountain Green Sewer, just to make sure that they're in the loop. With a change of use. I think that's, that's good.
And as far as the deli, is public going to be allowed in there or is it just?
It is. So to address any concerns on this deli, I do not, it is never my intention. I'm not trying to be the Taggerts of the West and have world's best pecan pie. You know, people are driving up the canyon to get it. This is specifically and really more, you know, most FBOs have a very, very low-key deli where they have vending machines, pre-made sandwiches, stuff like that. It's where pilots can congregate, you know, and my focus on this is build community, you know. I want, you know, I'm hoping, you know, that people can become intrigued and come down and learn about aircraft and the, you know, airplanes. And I'm really, it's such a small portion of any of the revenue on this, you know. The bulk of the revenue that I'm looking at is going to be in this avionics shop, you know, and fuel services.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we did hear the public's concern about increased traffic, aircraft and.
The noise.
And noise. Sounds like the county is the right place to ask the question about the berm. But so.
Black study that.
There's a question about that.
Questioned about.
I don't know if we're the right.
Listen.
Address this, but it reminded me there.
Has been addressed, if we, by Commissioner McConnell at the commission level for prior airport matters. As far as the berm goes, that is something that's also been addressed. And this project is. I'll just say, last year, I think it was the May 17th meeting, there was some discussion of using this project to finish that berm as well. So there is a relation, but there's nothing that the commission has found a reason to not allow projects to move forward while acknowledging that they have an intent to beautify that berm.
Thank you for that. I just want to be clear, I don't want to be dismissive of the public's comments. I just want to make sure they know that for this particular application, the county commission is the approval authority and they'll have an opportunity to discuss those at greater length. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, how about, if not, we just, how about we just go down the list of, like we did for the prior CUP? Just make some discussion points. So Josh, you said there's no, yeah, no, staff hasn't pre-recommended any conditions, right? Besides the standard one?
Because this is definitely airport and it would be part of a lease that would be worked out.
Okay. So our role then to make a recommendation to the county commission on this should be to discuss any detrimental, potential detrimental effects and how we can reasonably mitigate them, so.
I'd like the existing sewer hookup to be signed off by the Mountain Green Sewer District.
Okay. So number one would be.
That the existing sewer.
That Mountain Greens MGSID sewer improvement, on the sewer improvement district.
Inspects or signs off with?
Yeah, approves.
The existing sewer hookup?
Yeah, approves existing sewer.
For the new use?
Yeah. So they have capacity, but since the use is changing, we'd want them to make sure that they're not, there's no contaminants that it could potentially destroy the opportunity for those ponds to break down material. Introduce oil or something like that into there could stop the breakdown process. Noise, so specifically for this CUP, there is a larger question of the aircraft and what that bring, the airport, rather, and what that brings. But for this CUP, we're talking about a change of use for an existing building. So what noise concerns do we have? There was one in particular about running, doing engine runs outside.
Engines don't need to be run to install avionics. Just battered, they're all battery powered.
Okay, so you're not doing any propulsion, propulsion stuff there?
Nope. No engine, no body. All avionics, front panel.
Okay. So what do we need to reasonably mitigate with this application for noise? Anything you could think of? That's not already covered by the airport overlay?
Let's just say, I don't think there's anything different than an airplane coming in there.
So we have pre-existing, we already have.
As long as they're not testing the engines.
They're not testing the engines, so it's not a.
No, not, and not related to this, not related to the FBO, no pilots might be running or something like that. That's not related.
That's not here.
Yeah, that's not for him, so.
So anything with noise? Traffic, increased traffic to the, for the food use?
Most of them's going to come from airplanes or it's the airport anyways.
Any thoughts on that?
I don't. Back on, I mean, there was a complaint about planes landing at night, but again, this doesn't pertain to this one, but it.
It's a larger question for the airport itself, but since the, there has been a concern about safety, do we just, I mean, I know we're going to do a broad stroke for that you comply with all federal state regulations. Can we put an emphasis on fuel storage safety? That fuel storage safety complies with.
FAA regulations.
County, federal FAA regulations. So fuel storage.
Or sit.
Fuel operations comply with FAA, state, federal regulations. I don't think the county has any.
I don't think.
Hey, we have, it goes to FAA, right? Because.
Yeah, Utah.
It doesn't have anything to do with us.
Yeah, Utah will get involved with their quality, things like that.
And maybe put the lump all one that all other local, state, and federal laws are adhered to.
They'll have the hell of the state in here measuring VOCs and making sure nothing's leaking and have to comply with all that. Anything else you can think of? Did we miss anything from the public concerns?
Most of the concerns are about the airport in general.
Right, and I would highly recommend that, you know, continue to voice those concerns at the county commission level. Because it's a larger, a lot of this is related to the larger airport discussion. Okay, anything else?
The commission would probably address this too, but just as far as expanding the airport for those that haven't been involved in prior commission meetings. This Phase One and Phase Two, it is fully built out with the planning that there is, so it can expand further. So I know that there were some comments about worry about continued growth. There is no more land to grow, and so the buildings that are there, they can't go further unless they purchase new land or move the airport at some point. But many of the leases are 30 years, so it's not going to be anytime soon that they move the airport.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, any further discussion? Can you copy and paste a motion on top of that as well? That was very helpful last time.
The second one down with additional conditions.
I'll just keep it on the stuff and just flip over.
Okay.
You have to hit the arrow. Yep. That's it?
You're ready?
Yep, ready.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval.
No.
Oh, yeah, it's the wrong.
Forward deposit of recommendation.
Yeah.
Can you change that to forward deposit of recommendation?
Yeah, the second one didn't do that.
It still works.
Does it?
I move to recommend approval.
I move to recommend approval.
Okay.
To what, for.
To the county commission.
Yeah, to the county commission. For the Wasatch Industries CUP, application number 22.080. 22.080, located at the Morgan County Airport, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 9, 2023, with the following additional conditions.
Conditions one through three.
One, two, three.
Okay. Have a motion. Do we have a second for that one?
I'll second it.
Second over here. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
We're on our own now, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett.
For those that haven't had an opportunity to attend Garrett's Constitution classes, I would highly recommend it.
There's one tomorrow night.
One tomorrow night?
At six. You can watch it online. It's good.
Thanks. Item number four is file number 22.068, Wasatch Peaks Ranch LLC. This is for WPR subdivision Phase 3A preliminary plat. Staff has reviewed this preliminary plat. The original submittal required, I believe, two resummittals with corrections. Those corrections have been made. The county engineer and fire department have no additional comments as they've been addressed. With that, staff is recommending approval, and if you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Any questions for staff? No, any questions for the applicant? Hi. No, no questions for either. If you guys want any further discussion or are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I don't have any.
It is found, let's see what page is it?
Four.
Page four of this application.
Oh, great, thank you. Could you make it bigger for old eyes, please?
Real big.
That should do it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the county commission for the Wasatch Peaks Ranch subdivision, Phase 3A preliminary plat, application number 22.068, allowing for 26 lot subdivision of land located approximately 4195 north, 3800 west, in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 9, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Either way you want to go.
Okay.
Dustin wants it. We have a motion and a second by Dustin. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five.
Item number five is file number 22.071, also Wasatch Peaks Ranch. This application is their site plan review for their village amenities, which include several buildings that were described in your staff report for outfitters, restaurants, and several other different types of uses, along with some temporary parking structures, parking lots. The temporary parking lots will be gravel. They are planning on constructing a parking structure in the future, and at that time, the temporary lots will go away. With that said, staff has reviewed this. They were required to make multiple summittals. The final submittal, which they made to us, addressed all of our comments. They have addressed landscaping, lighting, and parking. With that said, there were no additional comments from the engineer or fire, and with that, we're recommending approval.
Can I ask him one quick question? Josh, I assume without even asking that this is just for the owners, for like their restaurant and whatnot, their shops, right?
That's correct.
All right.
But I figured that since they were commercial type entities, it fell within our Chapter Four for site plan review, and as such, they submitted a site plan, landscape plan, lighting plan with photometrics, and parking. I've done everything that staff has asked them to do with regards to the site plan.
Okay. Any other questions? No? No questions for the applicant? Take a motion on this then, if you're ready?
I can do it again.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the county commission for the WPR Village Amenities Site Plan, application number 22071, allowing for proposed, for proposed commercial and residential development located within the WPR development in unincorporated Morgan County, to be recorded based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 9, 2023.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Second right here. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six. Please next to our public hearings. We have the end of the agenda.
Yeah, I know. Did you say items?
Whatever.
Item number six, yes.
Okay, sorry. Item number six is the text amendment request from the county commission. They recommended that we modify the expiration of final plats. This item came before you, I don't remember if it was a month ago, or?
At least two meetings ago, and then we had discussion.
And I didn't realize that I hadn't included one section that modified the final plat, so we re-nosed it and added that section in. There's two sections, 8-12-41 and 8-12-59. The county commission requested that staff modify the text to increase final plat expiration to two years from six months and to allow for a one-year extension for all subdivisions. We drafted those text amendments, and that's what's before you right now. If you have any questions, I can answer that.
Yeah, I'm confused why so long.
Well, it takes quite a while to put in all the infrastructure improvements, instead of having them come back and reapply and extend it over and over and over again.
But for final plat, is that actually putting the subdivision in, or is that having it approved to do it?
So, there's two methods to record your subdivision. One is you put all the improvements in yourself. You don't post a bond, an insurance bond. You would post a warranty bond after all the improvements are put in. Some subdivisions, because of supply chain issues or whatever else, it takes quite a while. This is the only place I've ever worked where it was a six-month approval for recordation. Two years is pretty standard in every place I've worked.
You could bond and then record. These people, they don't want to bond. They want to put it in.
Right, so the other, the other way, if they want to record immediately, is to post.
Cash bond.
They would give our county engineer, their engineers estimate of the total cost of improvements. We would review that and either approve it or modify it, and then once that's approved, they would post the, they would either post a cash bond with the county where we would hold it, or they could post an escrow or letter of credit with a third-party financial institution that we have a list of those institutions that we trust. And that would be 110%. So, it would include 100% of the total improvement cost plus 10%. Now, the other option is they start putting in the improvements, but in order to recoup some of that money, they put up a portion of the bond, and that portion of the bond is the remaining cost of the improvements plus 10% of the total improvement cost. So, for instance, if you have an improvement cost of $1 million and you do $500,000 worth of work, your total bond and war, assurance bond and warranty bond that you would give to the county is $600,000. $500,000 for the remaining improvements plus $100,000 to cover the total improvements. And that warranty bond is if there's a failure within the first year.
So, the problem statement is, is you have been extending.
It's really difficult to track final plats, where there are, where they are at in the process, how many months they've been. The two years would make it a lot easier for staff as well to main, to let applicants know when they need to, and they would have to apply for that extension in writing before the expiration date, so. But it'd be a lot easier if it were longer.
Not really. I, I thought that it should be longer. I don't know about two years, but I thought it should be longer than six months as well.
I think six months, two years just seems a long time, but it all would depend on the nature of the project, too.
And supply chain, right.
Well, that's a nightmare right now.
Things have definitely changed.
I don't know if it'll ever get better.
Not to mention, your workload has increased for the county.
Yeah. I've received 17 applications just within the last two months. So, the applications haven't stopped coming in.
I don't have any discussion or problem with the amendment, just let the public, see what the public thinks about it.
Public hearing, okay.
Go Tina.
So, move.
It's up to Tina, then.
Move to go into public hearing.
You got a second?
I'll second the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now in public hearing for item number six. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to come up and give us a comment on this text amendment change. No? Anyone else? Okay, one more time. Nope? Okay, so.
Move to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion to go out second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now out of public hearing for item number six. I just wanted to add the comment. I appreciate your focus on, on public noticing and how you scrutinize that so much in this.
I try to get it right.
There was some sarcasm in there. Okay. No, nothing for the public? Any further discussion from us? Seems like pretty, it's pretty simple verbiage that you changed it to.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of the county commission for the revision of Morgan County Code, Sections 8-12-41 and 8-12-59, to mend the language to increase the time allowed for final plat approvals from six months to two years, based on the text and findings listed in staff report dated March 9, 2023.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
These guys are, this is good. This chomps the bits in it. We'll give that one to Shane. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, also a public hearing. Saying that out loud for my own benefit.
Item number seven is the text amendment for the family farm food production. This predates me, so I don't have all the history and all the knowledge of what went on and where it stopped. What I do know is when I first started here, Commissioner Fackrell took me out on a field trip to some homes in Mountain Green of individuals who would, who have smaller than R120 lots, but would like to have chickens and, you know, some small family farm. And our current code doesn't allow that. So, I've gone through the text that was proposed previously, and I've modified it so that it's no longer, it's permitted in all zoning districts, but it's regulated through your lot, your, the size of your lot. So, you can be an R18. If you have an 8,000 square foot lot, you can't do this. So, even though the use would be permitted, if your lot isn't large enough, you don't, you don't comply. So, what I was asked to do was to allow for, to include in the text an allowance for homeowners that have at minimum 10,000 square feet lot, 10,000 square feet, to have small animals, and then to make it so that the larger animals were restricted to lots that were at least one acre in size. And that once they got to one acre, they could have one horse or one cow or whatever, according to the code, and that for every 10,000 square feet over the one acre, they could add an additional animal. That text is in front of you. If you have specific questions, I can answer you or walk you through the text itself, whatever you'd like me to do.
I think you ought to permit roosters everywhere.
They deserve them. If one acre has to have them.
You want me to add that in?
Yes.
The Shane amendment.
Well, it would make the place seem more rural.
It would add to the rural character.
It would, yeah.
I hate chickens.
They're a necessary evil sometimes. I, I, my take on, this is the first time we've talked about this. We have gone back and forth quite a bit. I like, I like what you did with it. I, I think it's, I think it's good. And I like expanding it. If we're supposed to be a rural county, then these uses make sense.
There's one thing I did remember. When the county commission sent it back to us, there were, you talked about animals of foul not specifically listed, maybe substitute for those listed of similar size. They wanted who to determine, so maybe say similar size and type as determined by a USU extension agent. They wanted to clarify, who's going to determine that what they're substituting?
You don't want to do that?
No.
You could have a conditional use permit.
No. I think it's, you want to say is, is determined with the conditional use permit or just?
Call it staff does it.
You can leave it to the, you can say, according to, as determined by the zoning administrator, and then that would at least let me bring it to you if I wasn't able to figure it out. That way, it's not left to an extension office that I don't really have any contact with.
It's just down the hall. Yeah, no.
That could change.
Is determined by the zoning administrator.
Okay.
It's. I just know that that was their concern. It was Bobby in particular. I do remember that discussion at the meeting. And it, so they would be under 2A for large animals and under two for, under small animals.
Okay.
Similar size and type as determined by the zoning administrator.
Oh, it was mentioned to me earlier this week that maybe adding a paragraph about nuisance and relating it to code enforcement, so that if somebody doesn't maintain their yard and the odors from the animals, that we have some teeth. So, if you want to add a stipulation about that, that I put that in before I take it to county commission, I'll make that, that addition.
Or do you want to add it under the nuisance?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Another part of the code?
There is, there is another part of the code that addresses that, right?
There's the unkempt yard section in 8-6-22. I could add something in there if you'd rather.
Probably be.
It may not be noticed appropriately to change a different piece of code, so.
I could just add it in under here and reference the nuisance sections.
Yeah.
And the penalties.
Yeah, that would be appropriate, right? So, it would say something to the effect of?
If staff receives a complaint related to noise and through staff inspection, a nuisance because of odor or noise or unkempt yards due to animal waste or whatnot, that it would be filed under a section, whatever code enforcement penalty, something to that effect.
What are you gonna do about the owls in the tree next to my house?
The owls?
Yeah.
They are nuisance.
Deprivation.
You got a BB gun, don't you?
Yeah.
You know?
I don't think they're protected.
Sorry.
We'll talk after the meeting. That's illegal.
He comes every winter.
So, so what do you want to do? You want to add?
I can add a number nine in A, and I can add a number nine in B. I can add, uh, number nine in A, and I can add a number nine in B. That relates to nuisance and, uh, enforcement.
Okay.
Okay.
I will run it by the county attorney, and then I'll bring it to the, I'll have those additions in there with the county commission's meeting.
Okay. Any other input? Take a moment and hear it in public.
I move to go into public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now in public hearing for item number seven on our agenda. You couldn't follow? Noted. Thank you for your input. Anyone else?
I move to go out of public hearing.
Missed it.
No. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now out of public hearing for item number seven. Any further discussion? If not, if someone wants to take a stab at remembering what nine in A and nine in B is and how to reference that? Ready?
Or just with the?
Go.
Number nine A is large animals, and, uh, B, adding number nine into B would be adding the same nuisance into the small animals.
So how about we, we'll take a stab at saying it out loud so she can, she can record it, so.
Well, he's, he's getting it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And then also adding under two A, no, A two A and, and B two adding the words and, and, and type as determined by the zoning administrator. So it should read listed of similar size and type as determined by the zoning administrator.
Looks good. That's helpful, we should have been doing this all along.
Yes. Where have you been, Jeremy?
Four, right? Okay, any other questions? Ready to press if anybody's ready to engage? And go.
Mr. Chairman, I move we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for revision of Morgan County Code, section eight dash two definitions, eight dash five zoning districts established, and eight dash six supplementary regulation to allow for the new and new, and set new standards for farm animals in some residential zones, based on the text listed in the staff report dated March 9th, 2023, in addition to those bullet points that were added, uh, to be added into this motion.
Okay. I get, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, before, um, you have anything, uh, for us, uh, our bylaws say that we are required the first meeting in March to elect our chair and vice chair. We have, uh, I'm not even technically on, no, my term expired the last month. I'm staying on until someone from Mountain Green is appointed, I've agreed to do that. Chris may be back, but I, we may have an application from Enterprise, so we'll see how that shakes out the next time. A recommendation would be to postpone the appointing of a, a chair or a vice chair until we have everybody here and two new appointees, but that's up to you guys, however you guys want to do it.
I make a motion, really things the way they are till we have the planning commission fully staffed.
How about we, yeah, how about we just postpone the decision to, to appoint a new vice, chair or vice chair?
Yeah, until we're fully staffed.
Sure.
Okay, or however you want.
Get the new appointees.
No, I think, I think to the. That just takes care of it for the, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any press? Okay. The next meeting should be a little bit lighter, the next meeting's going to be heavy.
Yes.
Okay. Chris will, uh, be here for next meeting regardless if they appoint someone, just so we can say goodbye to him. And, uh, I think that's it. Nothing else for staff? I think you got Shane's input on the commission meeting notes, so.
I talked to Jeremy.
If there's nothing else, um, we'll take a motion to approve those.
To approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, Jeremy? Is he going to miss that? That's fine. What could go wrong?
I think that works.
Well, that really worked well, thank you, Jeremy.